Good evening, I would like to call the August 17th Legislative Meeting of the Happer-Horsham School Board to order. Please be aware that the Happer-Horsham School District Board of School Directors will be recording this meeting. The opinions expressed by any member of the public does not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Happer-Horsham School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Board hereby expressly disclaims all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. Any unauthorized rebroadcasting of any video, audio, and/or still image of this meeting is strictly forbidden without the written permission of the Happer-Horsham School District Board of School Directors. We stand for our flag salute, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Riker, could you do roll call, please?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Jennifer Wilson.
Here.
Dave Brown.
Here.
Eric Coombs. Susan Hunziger-Hoff.
Here.
DJ Schultz.
Here.
Marion McCouch.
Here.
Teresa Brown.
Here.
Tara Connor-Halston.
Here.
And Jim Greenhall. Thank you.
We did have an executive session prior to this meeting for legal and personnel matters. We, this is now time for the community input. As we passed policy, Board Policy 006, in the last two meetings, we had the first and second reading of the policy, we have added a second public comment section. So now the first public comment section will be for agenda items only, and the second public comment section will be for any other items that may not be on the agenda. If you wish to speak during public comment session, we could ask you to raise your hand. You can raise your hand by hovering your mouse over the Zoom toolbar and clicking the Raise Hand button. Phone users can raise their hand by hitting star nine on their phone. This will alert the meeting host that you wish to speak. When it is your turn, you will be changed to a speaking role and then you will be prompted on the call that it is your turn to speak. Speaking is limited to three minutes and when time has expired, you will be returned to a normal meeting participant. We also ask that you state your name and your address before you start on your comments. Are there any public comments at this time?
I do not have any hands raised in the Zoom meeting. Madam President. Hold on, one, just one did raise. Sorry about that, I just saw it. Okay, first up is Jen. Jen, I, you should be able to unmute now and speak.
Hi, this is Jennifer Matten from 21 Maurice Lane, Happer. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, excellent. So I have a question about the return to school in November. That's my biggest.
That is not on the agenda for today, so you can ask your question in the second public comment section, which is at the end of the meeting.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that is all the comments I see at this time, Madam President.
And Mr. Riker, were any of the emails received for any agenda items?
Uh, no, I will be reading them in the second portion.
Okay, great. Thank you. So now we move on to the approval of the minutes. So we are looking for approval of the minutes from the August 5th, 2019 School Board Directors Action Meeting.
Tara Connor-Halston, I approve the minutes.
Teresa Brown, second.
Any discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that move is. Then we go to the consent, consent agenda items. We have A, bills for approval and voided checks, B, capital projects reports, C, childcare programs, D, payroll reports, E, student activities funds, F, student scholarship memorial report, G, task collectors report, H, Title IX policy approval, and I, treasurer's, treasurer's financial reports. I'm looking for a motion for approval.
David Brown will make a motion to approve.
This is DJ Schultz, I second that.
Is there any discussion around any of those items? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on to Human Resources Action Items. Item A, administrative staff, B, approval of Act 93 salaries, C, certified staff, D, employment agreements, and E, support staff. Looking for a motion?
Teresa Brown, so moved.
The second?
Susan Hunziger-Hoff, I'll second that.
Any discussion on those items? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Special Services Action Item A, settlement agreement renewal approval? Looking for a motion?
David Brown, second.
A second?
Teresa Brown, second.
Any discussion around that item? All of those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we move on to the committee reports. Ms. Hunziger-Hoff, do you have any curriculum committee report?
The the curriculum committee has not met. It will be meeting on Tuesday, September 15th. By the end of this month, however, according to David Weber, we will be receiving course-specific templates for subjects such as ELA, math, science, social studies. That will be, that's in progress and ordinarily, there, there's curriculum revision during the month of August. Of course, this year is really way more involved and we should be hearing about the specifics in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Coombs is not here. Do we have any facilities items reports? Okay. Ms. McCouch, do you have any finance committee reports?
No report.
Mr. Brown, do you have any human resources committee reports? Ms. Schultz, do you have any policy committee reports?
We have no policy committee report.
Ms. Connor-Halston, do you have an Eastern Center report?
Yes, I do. Eastern is going to be virtual. Our participating schools, we didn't have at least 50% to even open. But have used $273,000 of grants to be COVID compliant. They've made huge, huge changes to the building. They even have stations if someone feels the need, they need to take off their mask, like a cubby area, that they can do that for five minutes. Nursing stations, it was, it was quite impressive. Their concern when they open is parking. Because again, the buses may be limited and they don't have like the parking we do at the high school. So they are considering different hours for, for start and, and stop time. That's all.
Okay, thank you. I do not have an intermediate unit report. Our next meeting is not until later this month. Ms. Brown, do you have a PSBA report?
Pennsylvania School Board Association has increased their meeting times from once a week to twice a week. We now meet on Tuesdays and Fridays. I just wanted to share this. One of the things they talked about was COVID-related policy revisions. For instance, what they did was add words or terms, like in the health examination screening, they added monitoring. Because they said that was important to be added. And in sickly, they added quarantine. These are some of the things they discussed at the meeting. That's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Taylor, do you have a federal programs report?
Yes, Madam President, just to note that we will be including Hollowell Elementary in our Title I program this year. That was tentative at our last meeting, but it has been confirmed that the Title I schools this year will be Hollowell Elementary, Crookedville Elementary, and Blair Mill Elementary. And that ends my report.
All right, thank you. Dr. Evanslog, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few things I'd like to share. Starting off with some good news, just some student kudos. So congratulations to the high, high school student Emma Massinger, who attends the Commercial Art Program at the Eastern Center. Emma was the winner of the, in designing the new logo for the Eastern Cares logo, which has been used through the, throughout the, throughout the county in their communication. So kudos to Emma, who did a great job. And additional congratulations to rising fourth grade student Emory Alderson from Simmons Elementary School, who won the Chicago Toy Company Spring 2020 Inventors Challenge. Emory's invention is called Slap Happy and was designed for young athletes to give socially-distanced high fives. So very appropriate. Congratulations to these two students. Earlier today, we sent a communication home to our families regarding some information regarding the reopening. Tomorrow marks three, three weeks until the start of school. So in those three weeks, we wanted to communicate with families regarding what some of the upcoming timelines and dates that would be pertinent to the reopening. Just a couple items of note with that. Students, families of students with IEPs have been and will be communicated, have a direct communication regarding the specific reopening arrangements for those families. That communication went out from the Special Education Department at the end of last week to those families and they'll have some additional follow-up meetings regarding specific reopening details for that student population. We are in the midst of technology distribution. It's going very well. Again, kudos to our student leaders who are working over at the high school with our technology team, doing a tremendous job. We have delivered in, in last week, up to Saturday evening, up to 1,600 devices. We have 1,200 more that are scheduled to be delivered this week. And we want to make sure that all students have access to devices prior to day one of school. We also have communication from principals to our families beginning this week, but certainly no later than next Tuesday, the 25th, with details around schedules. Schedules for the remote learning, as well as teacher assignments and student schedules. There are some highlights that they'll be sharing, the principals that will be building specific, including additional steps they're taking to support students who are transitioning to their buildings, whether that be sixth grade, ninth grade families transitioning into new buildings naturally, or students who just may be new, new to a building and school community. So each building is taking some additional steps in this challenging virtual world to extend welcome to those families and students to, to connect them with other students and the school community as effectively as possible. And there's some creative ideas that will be forthcoming, building specific about ways to connect students to the actual campuses and with their teachers. And so we're excited about that as well. Also, wanted to just share that we've had, our teachers have been now, this will be week three of their teacher preparation as far as professional learning in, in regards to preparation for remote, remote instruction. So we're pleased to share that we've had offered over seventeen sessions already for teachers that have been attended. We've had over almost 1,300 attendees, 1,280 teacher attendees at these sessions. And we have 27 additional sessions that are scheduled over the next few weeks. So we appreciate the level of commitment that we're seeing from teachers to try to improve and work on their, their skills to support students in remote learning. And I've just been very pleased with their level of commitment to this, to their continuous growth. And shared with the community some additional guidance that was released from, was, was released last week from the Pennsylvania Departments of Health and Education that they released some joint recommendations around some metrics regarding decisions around a reopening and instructional models that are appropriate for the 2021 school year. There were a couple links that took people to those locations, but did share with, with the community and those of us working on this, what data we will be looking at to try to gain greater confidence that, that we are moving in a safer direction towards reopening schools. So those data points are being explored daily and charted and also interpreted with consultation of experts in the field. So we will be planning to present that in our September meeting with some progress towards, towards the reopening. And again, some, some goals for data points that we hope to, hope to hit. Generally speaking, we're seeking obviously consistent trends of improvements of data of lowering case counts in the area, lowering test positivity rates, the two of the, two of the big metrics. And we've been looking at new case counts both in the county and in the borough of Happer and the township of Horsham. So those data points are important to us. Montgomery County is currently in the moderate phase based on the PDE metric that was released and we hope to obviously move closer and closer to the low, low phase that will provide for a safer reopening. Just wanted to share that with folks and encourage your exploration into that data. And that concludes my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Evanslog. Okay, now we are on to public comment section two. So this is the time for the public to offer comments on agenda items or non-agenda items. Again, if anyone wishes to make a comment, you can raise your hand. You can do so by raising your hand on Zoom, on the Zoom toolbar, or you can hit star nine on your phone. And that will alert the meeting host that you wish to speak. Speaking is limited to three minutes and please state your name and address. Thank you.
Okay, first hand raised is for Justin Ginhardt, G.I., sorry, G.I.N.D.H.A.R.T. You can unmute and go ahead and speak.
This, it's Ginhardt. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, I can.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you for letting me speak and I appreciate the board and Mr. Evanslag's hard work on all this. Two-part question. Well, one, I did send you guys an email. It was more detailed. I believe it was a couple days ago, it was more detailed about some of these questions. But the two big things I wanted to ask is, one, will the teachers be teaching from the classroom? The reason I ask is because the infrastructure that we have at Happer-Horsham is phenomenal, whether it be the cyber infrastructure, the tech support and all that. I know my wife's company is working from home and they're a large company and even they are having problems because of, you know, people using residential internet access versus commercial internet access, security firewall, stuff like that. So I'd just like to know if the teachers will be teaching from home and if not, the reason behind that. Second part is the reopening clarification. Mr. Evanslag did a great job and I appreciate that. I know he said we're in moderate, which said we can, which is in the guidelines that it could be a hybrid model. So I'm hoping that's good news that we're going to be working to getting our kids back in as soon as possible. I was just wondering if the district could focus for the September meeting to have an actual list of these are the exact metrics we're going to meet. This is our goal metric, say it's 10% less or, or something of that matter, so that the parents can really have, you know, something to look at, something to hope for, just a little bit more concrete plan. So that's all I have for this evening and I really appreciate you taking my comments.
Thank you, Justin.
All right. Okay, next we have Rich. That is the only name, remember to state your name and your address. Rich, you should now be able to unmute yourself, speak.
Hi, this is Rich Weimlet. I live on Stony River Drive in Maple Glen. Just have a couple questions about school reopening and comments. First one is, is could someone please explain why the decision to open schools seems to be binary? Either the entire school district has to stay virtual or the entire school district has to stay open because looking at the data, it seems that there should be a decision made as to whether some grades should be in-person or hybrid and some grades should be virtual. So for example, a 12th grader learns virtually much different than a kindergartner would. So I'm not clear as to why virtual learning is being discussed as it applies the same for both learning styles. Second is looking at the criteria from Governor Wolf. If you look at the percentage of spread in Montgomery County, at this point, it's less than 4%, which would be low. And that means in-person or hybrid. But then if you look at the actual case count, we're moderate, which would be hybrid or virtual. At what point is the school district going to say, okay, we can actually open up hybrid, whether it's for the entire school or as my previous comments is made, for some of the grades and not others? And last, I don't know if everyone saw it yet, but the New York Times did an article, an opinion piece called, Is Your Child School Ready to Reopen? Where they used information from the Harvard Global Health Institute. And you can click on our county and it'll say what the recommendation is based on the Harvard Global Health Institute. And their recommendation is that the primary schools open with certain criteria such as social distancing. And given that many of the schools for elementary school students are new, would it be possible to open in some form in person for the elementary schools? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Jen, J.E.N.N. You can, Jen, you can go ahead and mute yourself. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Jennifer, again, from Maurice. Thank you. This is my turn finally. I do have a couple of questions. As a nurse and a former occupational health nurse, my question is regarding FMLA. I, I am curious to know how many of the district teachers have applied for FMLA and whether or not these cases were continuous applications or intermittent FMLA cases. And my reason for that is, let's say we open and these teachers are on FMLA, what happens when a stomach bug goes around or, or influenza or any other virus or contagion? Will they be able to then again just continue? Or is it going to be intermittent in that they can come back and leave and so on and so forth? My other question is whether or not teachers have stipulated certain parameters for returning to work in person? I don't know much about how the union and the board kind of does their negotiations, but I am interested to learn if they've had demands or stipulations for them returning or if that's not the case. And if they do have stipulations, what, what they are. So if you guys would be able to share with the community what those are, I'd appreciate it. And that's pretty much it for me.
Great, thank you, Jen.
Next, we have Amy McKinney. Amy, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and, and make a comment.
Hi, my name's Amy McKinney, 35, Fieldstone Lane in Horsham. I am asking about the SATs for the seniors. My daughter is now on her fifth round of SATs that have been canceled. And many of the local high schools are hosting them privately just for their own students. Is this something that Happer-Horsham is going to consider to do? There is no seats available within 75 miles of Horsham. So I've been advised that Happer-Horsham is hosting them in October, but they most likely won't happen. She's scheduled in September. She needs to get her college applications in. That's it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Victoria Vesey, V-E-S-E-Y. I'm sorry if I mispronounced it. You can unmute and go ahead and speak.
Vesey, thank you very much. Name is Victoria Vesey. I'm on Byberry Road here in Hatboro. Since folks are talking about the possibility of switching to a hybrid situation, that brings back up the possible existence of the Hatters Academy. One question which was not answered earlier and I would hope and can be answered before we move to a hybrid model is whether or not since it looks like that would not be with Happer-Horsham School District teachers, will that be through a charter or will that be otherwise handled? If so, that is, if it is a charter, which cyber charter are, is the district looking to contract with? Other than that, I think you folks are doing a fine job. I'm and thanks for your time.
Right, thank you.
And that is all we currently have in the queue for on the phone call.
Okay, Mr. Riker, would you please read the emails?
As I will, Madam President, thank you. With Linda Greenberg. Hello, my name is Linda Greenberg, 220 Jefferson Avenue, Horsham. Thank you for taking the time to read and listen to my comments. I know we were all trying to figure out life as we live these changes in real time. I often hear families referred to as stakeholders or shareholders in the Happer-Horsham School District. If this truly is the case, when will the school district reach out for our help and our community's help to get our children, teachers, and staff back to the physical school buildings? We are a resourceful bunch. What do the schools need from us to get back to the buildings? I know I'm not speaking for everyone, but we can help install hand sanitizer machines that may have been ordered but waiting to be installed. We can run a collection drive of some sort to collect wipes, tissues, hand sanitizers for materials to be shared in the school district when supplies run low. Are there partitions that have been purchased but need to be put together and installed? Do unnecessary classroom items need to be moved to an area for storage or desks have been moved around to provide social distancing? Do the cafeterias need to be shuffled around to make better use of the space? We can paint, we can physically put things together, we can retype forms, we can reorganize our libraries, music rooms, art rooms, science labs, et cetera. We just have to be asked, please ask. We know there are guidelines, but I imagine those willing to help will adhere to them. I will always say I appreciate and support the teachers and staff of our district. My children and I have been blessed to have an incredible journey during our time in the Happer-Horsham School District. I ask from the bottom of my heart, please, 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 give some insight to what is really happening with our teachers and staff in all facets. I feel they're getting a bad rap because the district has not been able or willing to share what you have all been doing to get ready for virtual learning. Also, do we not have enough teachers willing to return to the classroom or not enough teachers to return due to additional classrooms that need to be staffed? What are the thoughts of the school principals? Perhaps we don't have enough staff for the buses, lunches, offices. We are human. It's okay to say we need more time to prepare. It's not what we want to hear, but it might help ease the minds of those who feel like the teachers don't want to go back. That's it, end of story. Transparency is needed more than ever in the school district. Lastly, can someone please make it clear that starting this school year off virtually does not make you an instant part of the Hatters Academy. I don't want to give up my rights to send my children back to the physical school building whenever that may be. Thanks again. Be well, everyone. Linda.
The next one is from Susan Clark. Good evening. My name is Susan Clark. I am a full-time support staff employee of the district. While I claim no authority to speak for all of the district's support staff, I have had many conversations over the past weeks with staff from many departments. I would like to remind everyone who we are. Support staff for the district include, in no particular order, bus drivers, nurses, food service workers, custodians, recess assistants, instructional assistants, special education assistants, library and technology assistants, childcare workers, administrative assistants, and secretaries. I apologize if I missed any particular group. We are a dedicated group of employees who do not have a contract, and we are not represented by a union. Most of us have been employees of the district for many years. We depend on our salaries and health benefits. While we recognize that these are difficult times for everyone, the lack of communication from the school district is frustrating and stressful. Many of us have reached out to our supervisors and human resources for information about our future with the district. If we are told anything at all, it is that there are no answers yet. I am respectfully requesting that some form of communication be sent to the support staff regarding our positions for the 2020-2021 school year. Thank you so much for your time, Susan Clark.
Okay, the next is from Mark Sully. Good evening. I have some questions, and while I know they can't be answered at this time, this important info should be made available. How many staff members apply for FMLA to not work in our, in our state-of-the-art building? Two, what parameters are teachers asking for to return to our state-of-the-art buildings? Three, how many students have withdrawn from Hattler Horsham School District? How many need to withdraw before teachers will be furloughed? Four, will virtual learning be transparent and equitable by making it available, videoed lessons, so that lessons can be done with the help and or guidance of a parent in a convenient time? Many families have two parents who work outside the home, and many lessons will need to be done in the evening. Five, what is happening with students who have PT, OT, speech therapy, counseling, et cetera, as part of their IEP? Thank you for your time. Mark Sully.
Madam President, that ends the virtual comment.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor and Mr. Riker.
Do you have any to respond to a few?
Sure.
Madam President? Thank you for those of you that shared comments, either via email or by participating in the meeting this evening. I can speak to some of the comments generally. First, we, we are not mandating that teachers teach from their classrooms. That's not how we're starting, starting the school year. We are holding teachers to high expectations for what instructional delivery will look like, and we expect that delivery to be at a very high level. And if that can be accomplished at the home, in, in the safety of someone's home, without impeding instruction or the student experience, we see not, no reason to have to mandate a staff member to, to teach from the classroom. But again, the, the goal is quality instructional delivery and a meaningful learning experience for students. That's the primary goal with that. The question about the planning being binary, I, I don't believe that characterizes how our, what our approach and recommendation has been. We are starting the year remotely with some students with IEPs joining us in person, and the plan has been that we will seek other ways to bring students returning throughout, in more of a, in more of a transitional type of approach as opposed to all, all or nothing. There's some questions about FMLA, FMLA, excuse me. And I would like to respond to those. I mean, FMLA is a, is a federal law, and it's fairly on individual-by-individual basis, something that we're required to go through with, with, with staff members. But that's something that we would, we would always have to respond to if, if a staff member were to, were to come forward with, with FMLA to support that staff member. I can speak to the dealings that we've had with our teachers and the union, and I can share with you that I've been here since July 1, and have definitely experienced a very collaborative approach to this complex process by our teachers and union. At no point has the union offered any demands or put stipulations on us. We did ask for their feedback, like we asked for feedback from our other staff members and our community about, and that feedback was gathered through surveys, both in June and July. And we've had meetings with representatives of the union as well. As I shared in my report earlier, I've sensed a commitment from our teachers to, to deliver quality instruction regardless of what the, what the instructional mode was. There's a question about SATs, and I can assure you, because I've worked with both Mr. Williams and the team at, at the high school, as far as trying to find a way to ensure that students can have the SATs. Certainly in October, we have a high percentage of our students that are scheduled for that administration are Hattler Horsham students. But we know the college board is also scrambling to try to find ways for students to test. So we, we are aware of that concern and want to be a support for our students to ensure that level of access to the SAT exam and other college board assessments. There's a question around the, the hybrid model, and whether or not, if we were to go to the Hatter Academy, would we be outsourcing to a, to an outside charter? That is not the case. If we go to a hybrid model and students wanted to enter the Hatter Academy, or at any point under the Hatter Academy, our intention is for that instruction to be delivered by our staff, where students could remain students of the Hattler Horsham School District. And there was a question around special education and the, it's hard to respond to specific needs of the students with, with how, how related services and, and different supports will be in place. But that's the purpose of the communication from the Special Education Department, to ensure that families have those questions answered, but they are very, very individualized. So it's very hard to make some generalizations around that. But we want those questions to be answered for, for our families. And then finally, there was a question around support staff. And I guess, Mr. Riker, if you could speak to that, because I know we've, both you and our HR department, Ms. Welsh, have had a lot of communication with our support staff. So if you could just speak to that briefly?
Sure, sure. You know, our priority across the board is to maintain all of our support staff long-term, and to keep our support staff working during the fully virtual programming period. Now, as long as their positions are required, or they can be reassigned to an area of need. And to date, we have communicated to many of our support staff employees, and will continue to do so this week as more specifics become available.
Thank you. That's it, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Everslog. Now, this section is called comments from board members and superintendent. This section used to be known as old business and new business. So if there's anything someone we'd like to bring up, they can do so at this time. Okay. And then, so that's the adjournment of the meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Heather Brown, somebody?
Is there a second?
Heather Brown, two minutes and a half seconds.
All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, and have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.